You're on the record.
Good morning. This is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone, and it's wonderful when it falls on a Taco Tuesday. It is 9:00. This is the Board of Ada County Commissioners. Commissioner Kenyon is in the room. I am in the room, and Commissioner LaCiando is with us virtually. Also in the room, we have, we'll start over here.
Beth Maugh, Treasurer.
Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Bob Perkins, Executive Attorney.
Kurt Hutt, Solid Waste Management.
Phil McGrain, Clerk.
All right. We will come to order, and first item will be changes to the agenda.
Yes. There is one change to the agenda, and I'd like to read into the record that there'll be a resolution coming next week to increase our emergency COVID-19 contingency fund with an increase of another $250,000. So we'll just need to read that into the record.
Okay. And also, this is hopefully recuperable, we will be recouping these funds out of the federal dollars account.
Bangers crossed.
So that's important to note, I think, for the record as well. So corrections to the record. We have a correction for, to the 414, 2020 Open Business Meeting Agenda Agreement Number 11361-5-20. It is being re-signed for the purpose of acknowledgement of a correction in Exhibit B4.
Yes, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the corrections to the April 14th, 2020 Open Business Meeting Agenda.
And do we have a second? She's not on the phone. I will second.
There you go. All those in favor state aye.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Procurement. Award of bid 20041 Ada County Coroner's Office. Cooler freezer expansion project, and this was tabled from 4/30.
So you'll need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table?
I, yes.
Okay, I move to, to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
And.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have the motion carries.
And do we have?
I just have the motion carries.
Okay. You're right.
Close enough.
All right.
I can hear you guys now.
Okay.
Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the evaluation team for bid 20041, the Ada County Coroner's Office Cooler Freezer Expansion Project, would like additional time to review the bids and request that the award recommendation be tabled to Monday, May 11th, 2020 for that open business meeting for further consideration.
Okay, and we would need a motion on that?
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to retable bid 20041 Ada County Coroner's Office Cooler Freezer Expansion Project to May 11th, 2020.
Do we have a second? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner LaCiando might not be able to hear us, but the ayes have it. The motion is retabled to May 11th.
Okay.
And we need another motion to, so we also have another unfinished business item that was tabled. Award of bid 20047 Ada County Landfill Wellhead Conversation and Gas Fitting Purchases. And this was tabled on 4/30. So we have a motion to reconsider that?
We'll have Bob present first.
Okay.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, the evaluation team will need additional time with this bid as well. We received bids last week for the six divisions. We opened them up. We had three bidders. But in one of the divisions, there may have been a little confusion on the amount or quantities that we asked for in that particular division. And we received a protest from one of the bidders who had bid on that particular division. Almost simultaneously, we also received an email from the low bidder in that division saying they may have made a mistake. So we need a little more time to clarify in that division, to make sure all the bidders are bidding apples to apples. And so a little more time will help us get to that determination. So we're requesting to retable this award to the May 11th, 2020 Open Business Meeting for further consideration.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to.
Is this 20041? Is this the Cooler Freezer?
No, this is. 20047.
47.
47, yeah. Okay, to the May 11th as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I move to retable bid number 20047 to May 11th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second that?
I will second.
Oh, I can't second. I made the motion.
You made the motion. I will second. I'm just seeing if Commissioner LaCiando is able to hear us. And the motion carries.
Great. All those in favor state aye.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Bob.
I think she can hear you. You just can't hear her.
Okay.
Which is reverse of what was.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, so, oh, yes. Commissioner LaCiando, you can unmute your computer now if you're hearing us. So now we have new business. Is there any new business for us to address?
Yes, so you'll need to open the public hearing.
And with new business, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone to offer testimony here?
On the Resolution 2512.
Oh, specifically, my apologies. Specifically on Resolution Number 2512, Resolution for Outside Counsel for the Coroner. Anyone here to offer testimony on that resolution? Hearing none. We will close discussion on that.
Yeah, close the public hearing.
And we will close the public hearing. We now need.
Make the motion?
Make a motion for Resolution Number 2512.
I move to approve. Resolution 2512 is listed on the agenda.
Second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Motion carries. Perfect.
Close, yeah, now we've got closed public hearing.
He closed it.
So we will close public hearing. Okay. Now we have a slew of licenses to be renewed, and I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Ratifications. I move to approve and ratify the licenses listed on the agenda, including 113 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will now hear from our Clerk's office.
Do I need to move up to the mic?
You can, yeah, that would be helpful, I think, Phil.
Yeah, that's right, because that one's for webex, yeah.
Yeah, you feel free. I'll roll back for even.
Thank you, Commissioners. Hopefully everyone online can hear me. A few different things. I guess I'll start with the good news, great news. We got notification just recently, so if you guys, for Commissioners and actually Commissioner Laurie, because we looked at it, our Ada County Budget Explorer, that tool that I used for the public presentation last year, all of that stuff. We were recognized by GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, for an award for excellence in government finance. We had submitted it as part of the budget, but this is one of GFOA's largest awards that they recognize governments with.
I'm gonna do this so you can see me smile.
I know, exactly. And I'm smiling as well, as much as you can't tell.
That's awesome.
But it's a really huge recognition. It's unfortunate that this is the year that we get it. So Anthony Locksmith really deserves the lion's share of the credit. Him, Chelsea Caratini, Kathleen, Tim, all worked on making that, you know, accessible, but they, we had actually submitted it for something else, and they were so impressed, they moved it up for recognition as part of their award for excellence. And so just in terms of innovation, and they said, you know, it was greater than transparency for transparency's sake. They were just really impressed how they could navigate and follow along, and the wealth of data in terms of budgeting that was available to the public this way. So I got to, I talked to GFOA for a while, but it was a really neat thing. I mentioned it's unfortunate in the timing, because with coronavirus and everything, the GFOA conference comes up here in May. This is why we're receiving the recognition, and we would have been recognized onstage as part of the ceremonies at the event. Clearly, that's not going to happen. So we will get a trophy and some other things, you know, to put on the wall. But still, it's a pretty huge recognition. GFOA will be sending out information nationwide regarding what we did. And so we'll make sure to send out an update once we have the information from GFOA to share with everybody. But it's a pretty, a pretty big acknowledgement for any, any government in Idaho to receive such an award.
Let's do a presentation here when you get the trophy or whatever, or do something special.
Yeah, and I'll try to figure out how. Anthony says he likes to be recognized with Dr. Pepper rather than trophies, so we will be lining up some Dr. Pepper for Anthony.
We'll make a Dr. Pepper trophy.
Yeah, for those who remember, he was in the credits for Wizardry, is what he listed himself as in the Budget Explorer. So really big deal for our office, and so we're very proud of it. And it's perfect timing, too, as we head into the budget process and trying to figure out how we can make the budget process even more accessible to the public.
Congratulations, and I, and I hope the public appreciates it as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'll also just give you another update. We have issued just over 65,000 ballots so far. Most likely, by this time next week, we will have issued more than twice as many ballots for this election as we issued four years ago for the same election.
That's crazy.
Yeah, so the numbers just keep ticking. We do know for sure that, for voters who hadn't requested one as of yet, that many people received a postcard in the mail, or they received a mailer that has some postcards with request forms on them. They started hitting mailboxes yesterday. Any of those came from the Secretary of State's office. If you know anybody who hasn't requested one, or they've had any issues, I know Diana and I were trying to assist somebody who was having issues with the online form. Easiest thing is check which ballot you want and sign that postcard. It's got prepaid postage, so that's probably the easiest thing at this point for people to do, is just send the, mail those in, and they can get their ballot. Overwhelmingly, most people who vote at this point have requested their ballot. But there's still lots of opportunity. I mean, we have over 260,000 registered voters, so there's still quite a few people who could request ballots for this election.
So I have a quick question on that, because I specifically did not request one, knowing that it would come in the mail, because I had requested previously to have them sent. But there's a voter ID little area on there. What does a person write down in that? Because I've had that question come to me already.
They don't need to do anything.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that a voter needs to do, the voter ID, it should be preprinted, a number should be preprinted there. It's more an administrative thing to make it easier to.
Because I've had my neighbor, since I'm the PC still in my area, ask me, what's this voter ID number? What do I need to give them? I told them driver's license number, but.
Yeah, any, they don't need to do, the only, there's two things. They pre-populated the forms. They just need to check the box for which ballot type and sign it. Signing it is the really big thing.
And that's, yeah, I informed them of that as well. Perfect. Any other questions for our clerk? Hearing none. Any questions on the big screen for the clerk? Nope.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
And kudos, yes, big kudos.
Especially to Kathleen and Anthony.
Let the Dr. Pepper flow. All right, we now move on to item number four, our Claims Journal.
Yes, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April 30th, 2020.
Do we have a second? Without audio, I will second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, Assessors' Office.
We've got Mr. McQuaid up on the screen.
We've got, there he is, Big Bob.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Robert, I should say.
Before I get started, I just wanted to tell, give Phil thanks. My wife and I had submitted applications for an absentee ballot with the Secretary of State's office well over a month ago, and we didn't ever receive that. And I checked with Phil, and he had not received it. We, in the mail yesterday, received our application from the county for the absentee ballot. So Phil, thank you so much for your help with that. I want to talk about the property tax deduction for just a moment. This year, we have 3,785 that we've received to date. That's down 95, or 2.5% from last year, it's 380. But we still have about two more months to go for the PTR. We are opening our offices. We're bringing employees in this week and next week, and we're scheduled the May 18th opening, but we're going to actually have a soft opening starting next week. We're not going to be advertising it, but if anyone wants to bring things in, we will bring that in, and then we'll have a full opening on the 18th. At this time of year, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I typically go out to the different taxing authorities and brief them on what's been going on in their particular area as far as assessed values and property taxes and whatnot. We really were in a quandary issue of what we're going to do. I think the answer has just surfaced. Next Monday, I'm going to do a virtual presentation to Boise School District. If that's successful, we will go ahead and work with the cities and the other taxing authorities and see if a virtual assessment briefing would be working for them. The last thing I want to mention, and this is moving on to the next item, Agenda Number Six, is tax cancellations. There are a large number of them and a substantial amount of money. And I've invited Aaron Brady to join us today to just give a brief description of what that's about, if we may.
Absolutely.
Good morning, everybody. These tax cancellations were the result of kind of an unprecedented event. We've never had anything like this happen before. What happened was, these parcel numbers are in an industrial condo unit development. It's a gated development. The units that are being tax canceled were actually never constructed. The developer ended up not building an entire building's worth of units, and instead redistributed the platted square footage to make existing units in other buildings bigger. But he did this without recording an amended plat for the subdivision, so we didn't know about it. And because the development is gated, we weren't able to get inside and inspect, and inspect these units. He was given assessment notices for all 16 units for 2017, 18, and 19. And at that time, he missed another opportunity to let us know that these units had never been built. He also did not pay any taxes on these units, so I guess that's a good news. So anyway, we are removing these units from assessment for 2020, but we are tax canceling 16 units for 17, 18, and 19 as well. The amended plat is, is my understanding, it is still in the works. So we're still awaiting legal, new legal descriptions for all of the units. But at this time, we have removed the 16 units from assessment for 2020, and we have redistributed the square footage to the other units in existing buildings that, that were made larger as a result.
Thank you. And Erin, I thank you yesterday, too, for your email and the brief phone conversation. So as I understand it, like you said, this was increased square footage, so the assessment was paid. It was just paid on other buildings that had increased square footage.
Not in prior years. That will be corrected for this year.
Okay.
The, the remaining units in the existing structures, they were assessed as listed, but, but that plat was incorrect as well.
Okay.
So those ones were under assessed, and we assessed 16 units that didn't make it.
Okay.
So Erin, could, Chair?
Yes.
So Erin, and Bob, so couldn't we go back and reassess the parcels that increased and pick up the difference there back for 17, 18?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, no. Once a year is behind us, we cannot do any back assessment at all. So for example, I cannot go back and assess something that was missed, we'll say December 30th of 2019.
But he, this gentleman, whoever, like, I don't know who it is, the owner, do we, did we check with Development Services to make sure that they're going through the amended plat process?
Erin, you answer that, Ellen.
Our Land Records Division has been working with City of Meridian as well as Development Services, and, and the amended plat is in process. It just isn't completed.
Yeah, as Erin explained, this is hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime, never-to-repeating-itself event.
I hope so.
Thank you very much.
The conclusive report for the Assessors' Office, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bob. All right. With that, we will move on to the tax cancellations.
Okay, I'll make the motion, and I move to approve the tax cancellations. It's listed on the agenda, which includes 16 tax cancellations for 2017, 16 tax cancellations for 2018, and 16 tax cancellations for 2019, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
And do we have a second? I will second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion carries. All right, and now we get to hear from Beth, our Treasurer's report.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'll just pick up on those tax cancellations, and I would just like to note a huge thank you to Bob, Erin, and their whole staff. They did bring this to our attention once we knew about it, because these cancellations do affect the tax collector. A lot of these, they can be time-consuming, not so much these parcels, but just in general, when there's a cancellation, removing payments and reapplying those payments to make sure that the interest calculation is working accurately. So I do appreciate how proactive the Assessor's Office was in working with us. These tax cancellations roll right into what we're doing right now, and that is, I know PTR and assessments were in 2020. The Treasurer's Office is still in 2019, so we are processing cancellations, any other adjustments, because next week, we are billing for the second half 2019. So that remains our priority. An objective right now is to process cancellations, prepare for that second half tax payment, which is due June 22nd. And then also, as I mentioned last week, it's month end, so our team is reconciling the county's accounts right now, and that remains a top priority. That's it from the Treasurer's Office.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Unfortunately, I will not look forward to those second half assessments coming in. As a, as a landlord and a property owner, that's a, that's a big bite, but it's got to be paid. All right, we will move on to number eight, Expo Idaho. And we have four items here. And I would entertain a motion. I know we have one.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to make two motions here. I'm going to make a motion to approve three interim events agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign documents on the behalf, on behalf of the Board, and those would be B, C, and D. And then I'm also going to make a motion after that to deny the children's consignment sale as set, as listed on the agenda, to set up on 614 to 616, as I don't believe that that meets the Governor's order requirements at this point, so.
Two, I don't know if we need to keep these in order. Do you want to make your second motion first?
That's fine. So I move to deny the interim event agreement, Children's Consignment Sale, Argos Event Management International, due to COVID-19 Governor's restrictions.
And I would second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And now, if you'd like to make a motion to approve B, C, and D?
Yep, I move to approve B, C, and D. Those three interim event agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
And I would second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. All right, on to number nine, our agreements.
Yes, Chair, I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
And do we have a second? Still no audio up there. I will second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And on to number 10, Indigent Services.
Yes.
Weekly indigent services.
Chair Boy, I move to accept the recommendations of Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated May 5th, 2020, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
And I second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Procurement.
We have Kurt here.
Kurt, he would like to come forward and inform us of your recommendations on.
Since you're here.
RFQ 2005 Landfill Administration Bill.
Yes, I believe Eric is on the, the conference also. So we're going, this is basically just officially canceling that RFQ out. So we had, we were gonna award it to a certain engineer firm, and so it was, been on hold and been on hold, and it's not going to happen now. So we just want to officially cancel it, and so that's, that's basically all it is.
And am I correct that some of the resources that were designated to this will be helping you guys take, take over a bigger portion of the operation of the landfill?
Yes, yes. We'll be able to purchase all of our, the little smaller equipment that we need to have it ready to go.
Which will actually be saving the taxpayers money.
Absolutely.
Which was a wonderful thing to see. All right, anything else from you on that?
That's it.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
Right, then I'll go ahead, and I move that we reject all submissions received.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Ruppert. Can you?
Yes, Steve.
Sorry, I'm just helping Diane try to trouble you, so thank you. Just needed confirmation you can hear me.
Okay, yes, we can. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead with your motion.
I move that we reject all submissions received in the response to RFQ 20005 Design Services for the Ada County Solid Waste Management Office Building, and not proceed with the project for this fiscal year.
Do we have a second? Hearing none, I will second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Miscellaneous. Valley Regional Transportation Budget Discussion.
So since Commissioner LaCiando can't be included in this conversation, I move that we table this and have the discussion put back on the agenda.
I will second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. And I'm sorry, when were we tabling that until?
Until, just a further date.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't know.
And.
In the near future.
I believe that brings us to the end of our meeting. Do we have a motion to recess?
You just, you just.
Or we just go into recess?
You just re-jurn.
We are in recess.
Thanks, everybody. See ya.
Board sitting as EMS, and, I'm sorry, Ada County Commissioner sitting as EMS Board. It is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, and we will call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Kenyon in the room, and do we still have Commissioner LaCiando?
Right now.
Not right now, but we will allow her to join us as needed. We do have a quorum, so we will begin. Any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to agenda. New business, the Claims Journal for April 30th, 2020.
Yes, Chair Malloy, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed in the Claims Journal dated April 30th, 2020, regarding EMS expenditures.
I will second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, motion carries. We are now in recess.
Heard in general session.
Okay. Board of County Commissioners is back in general session for indigent hearings, and we have Commissioner Kenyon in the room, I am in the room, and Commissioner Laciando on, virtually on the web. Phil McGreen is in the room with us, and we have several participants still online. So we will go back and take up the items of the special finance case, case number 1306-057. If we have a motion on that, we'll entertain it.
Yes, Chair, I'm ready to make a motion. I would make a motion to approve the subordination agreement for case number 1306-057 to account for a payment of approximately $3,200 to pay off the original promissory note dated 9/11/2013, and increase the monthly payment to $50 a month, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second one. Tax hardship applications, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Southwest Idaho. Do we have a motion on that item?
Can I take this, Commissioner Laciando?
Let me have some discussion first.
Yep.
Sure.
I'm having a hard time with this because, you know, I have tried to take a pretty black and white line, excuse me, on whether people can pay or not. I feel like I need to get into some more shades of gray here because it feels like we're penalizing organizations who in some ways have decent financials because they worked hard, and others haven't necessarily. So I am leaning towards moving to approve the tax hardship application on this one.
Personally, I, on your ability to pay remark, feel like this would not, in my mind, not necessarily qualify as a hardship seen as they do have the ability to pay. I don't know that it's within their comfort zone, but I do feel like they have that ability, and that they will qualify for it this next tax year as well. Commissioner Kenyon?
Yeah, I'm nearly split on this too. Gosh, you just, you know, you really want to be able to help these nonprofits be able to do their good work, and you don't want to penalize them, but on the other hand, you know, you've got to be fair with everyone, and if you've got an asset, you've got total assets of $768, almost $769,000. Certainly, they can pay the taxes due of $6,0981. What I would be willing to do on this one is I'd be willing to reduce the hardship case by 20 or 30% instead of the full amount.
Do a proportional reduction?
Yeah. I would make a motion to reduce it 30.
And I did talk to Legal on that prior because that was a question I had when I first looked into all this, that we do have that ability to do a proportional reduction for hardship cases.
And I'd be willing to entertain a different percentage, but 20 to 30% just seems like we're giving them at least somewhat of a break, but again, we've got to treat all of these pretty fairly, equitably.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep. Yes, Chair Malloy. I move to approve the tax hardship application for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of SWI parcel number R2052740040 to reduce the amount owed of $6,0981.56 by 30% and make that due and payable immediately.
I would second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, I made the motion.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll give you an aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Unanimous, the motion carries. Okay, we can now take up the issue of Kuna Lodge, number 147, Community Hall. Again, if we want to go to discussion right away for me, I just got done reading a letter from Legal that talked about the five key elements that a, this is not, this is asking for an exemption as a, well, actually, as a hardship in this case, correct?
Yeah, it's a hardship.
But the one, the one thing that, for me, is a hurdle to get over is I don't necessarily see them providing a service that is not otherwise available in the community through church halls or other locations that they could, that individuals could utilize for what they're doing. I absolutely see the value of what they're doing, but I don't know that it's also something that the government would otherwise provide. They also mentioned, I mean, they do have this, as she characterized it, expense account sitting there with funds. I, again, on the full amount, I would not necessarily favor this.
Well, I'm thinking that they do qualify to be, they have qualified in the past anyway to be a charitable organization. And that's why I was going down the path of, you know, who are you providing services for? And they did list Lions Club, American Legion.
I mean, it is a general community, I agree.
Yeah, and these old lodges, the Kuna Lodges, you know, these go back to the Pony and, I don't know, back in the Western days when they were really popular, and I think they are sort of fading, phasing out, if you will. So in these smaller communities like Kuna, they probably still are able to provide some community service. So I think because they do qualify, I wouldn't look at that as a, as something that I would base my decision on. I'm looking at, is it a hardship? And they have the $10,000 for emergency funds, like you said, $10,000 in their checking account. They do have a really small budget. So with their total, yeah, with a total income of $17,000, and this bill being $4,481, that is pretty significant out of that small budget. I kind of, I'm almost tempted to go the same route here, possibly because they need the money a little bit more just to stay afloat. I'd be willing to go up to 50% reduction on that one.
Commissioner Laciando, do you have any?
Well, I like where you're heading. I think, to my prior comment, one of my concerns with all of this is, you know, if you're a hardworking, very sick nonprofit, and you've done a lot to elicit donations, you're almost sort of getting penalized. Whereas these folks, you know, have some donations, but it's pretty slim, slim picking. She didn't know anything about Idaho gifts, so.
Oh, my, yeah, my compassion for her is, yes, and I will be, I will be reaching out to her and sending her a link to that program.
So I'm tracking with where Commissioner Kenyon's heading this morning on the 50%. They'd still have to do something, and it would be less of a burden.
So that'd be about $2,240 some dollars at 50%. I think that that's doable, that's not going to break them, but still, you know, getting something.
And these are, and just from my personal edification, these are funds coming out of the budgeted indigent services line item, correct? And, well, no, not really, because this is not outgoing, this is lack of incoming. That's right.
This is other property taxes, taxes are, their burden would be spread amongst others.
They're making up the difference.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd be willing to go for 50%.
Well, then I'll leave it to you to make the motion.
You ready? Okay. All right. I'll go ahead then, and I move to approve tax hardship application for Kuna Lodge, number 147, Community Hall parcel number R507000971, to pay the amount reduced by 50%. So that would be 50% of $4,485.18. And, yeah, that's it.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes, it is unanimous, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay. We are now in our, let's see, we've addressed all these.
Community discussions, that we have three contracts that Phil wants to talk to us about.
Okay.
Before we move forward to that, just so I can make sure and get this on the record for transparency purposes, as I noted, St. Luke's reached out to me to, they were looking for guidance on the fact that they missed applying for their property tax exemption for their new children's pavilion. I directed them to reach out to the General Board of Commissioners email to start the process for what that might look like. So I just wanted to put that on the record that they had reached out to me individually, but I asked them to follow the general process.
Very good. It is on the record. All right. Phil?
All right. Good morning, commissioners. As I mentioned earlier, we've got Katie with me, as well as Siobhan, all of us have kind of been working on things. There's no decision per se to be made in this at this moment, but there will be decisions to be made related to the budget, so we wanted to bring these up. Because one of the things, as you guys can probably imagine, we've been looking closely at the indigent budget for two reasons. One, our budget's due today, so that motivated us a lot. And then two, the, just the overall picture of indigent, I know you guys have asked a lot of differing, Commissioner Kenyon, you've inquired, Commissioner Laciando, you've inquired about it. So we've been working on it, doing some projections, and we have developed a budget for indigent. But as we were developing, specifically looking at the line items for medical, mental health, other things, which is our big, that's our big budget decision, so we've worked on that piece, and we'll update you when the time's appropriate for that. It raised questions of projections in terms of, well, how much of this is shifting to Medicaid? And everything else that's going on with Medicaid expansion, right? Specifically, that Medicaid is now picking up the overwhelming majority of what we do, right? We still have this limbo phase where we have stragglers, but the majority of it is. We have some contracts, and I think, I know I saw, I talked to Nancy Wordell yesterday about Allenbaugh House briefly, so I know that conversation has come up with you guys, and the Allenbaughwood House would fit into this to a certain degree as well. But we have three agreements, Ada County Community Paramedics, Genesis, which provides, oh, shoot, I should have kept it up. They provide assistance to uninsured folks in the community, right? They provide medical assistance to uninsured. And then New Path, kind of, they're not, they're all a little bit different than each other, but they're all, to a certain degree, under the framework. We have supported these efforts, and different, they've been initiated under different commissions to reduce some of the costs. These are organizations that are on the, they're on the front end trying to provide services so that the people who we would normally see come through the indigent process may not make it to us. Rather than go to the emergency room, they will be treated in some form or fashion by one of these organizations, right? And that's what's funded it, because the indigent fund is still specifically designed for the programs the legislature has set, which is what you guys have just been meeting on, right? In terms of relief. What makes these interesting, you know, at first blush, and I'll say this, we've added them to our budget, they're currently in there, so this is where I will come up in the budget process. I should have probably had this conversation a little earlier because we could have made a determination before that. But is, should we continue to fund these? And then, I guess, also, if we do, should we continue to fund them at the same rates? Because we anticipate roughly, I mean, that all the projections were that about 80% of our cases will shift to Medicaid. And in many instances, the populations that we're talking about, that these organizations treat, are even more likely to shift to Medicaid. Because, again, by Medicaid expanding, those who don't have incomes or things are going to qualify for Medicaid. We still have the underinsured, people who choose not to take health insurance, right? There are a few groups that will fit, that we will still continue to care for right now, but a huge amount will not. And so I guess the question is, one is, and Legal may have thoughts on this too, and I have not approached Legal with these questions, but just, how appropriate is it for us to continue to fund these? Because some of the justification is now different than it once was. I will note, Genesis has actually asked for a slight increase in our contribution to them, which, from their perspective, makes sense, but it's interesting, someone, and they have identified it too, a bunch of Genesis's work may shift as well, because the people that they're helping are now Medicaid eligible. So I think they're going through their own existential issues, right? With what is their role now that Medicaid is being expanded? It's worth noting that some of these, the reason I bring these up, these are some of the intentional results of expanding Medicaid, right? And so I guess I just want to have a conversation with you, we can talk about any different program. Katie met with Genesis just recently, so Katie has a lot more information, can talk about what Genesis is specifically doing. Community Paramedics is through EMS. It's all kind of preventative and saying, hey, if we spend a dollar here, we might save $3, you know, down the line. But now that that $3, at least two of them are being picked up by the state, is it our role to be funding it, or is it something the state might want to look at or something else? So that's the general idea, and just wanted to see if you had any thoughts, and give you the chance to think about it rather than it coming up in the budget process.
Appreciate that. Katie, what do you know about Genesis? Can you tell us what you've learned?
Sure, good morning, commissioners. Siobhan and I both met virtually with them. They gave us a little bit of a presentation in terms of what services they provide, why they're asking for an increase. Historically, we've been giving them $66,000, and they would like a $6,000 increase. They provide medical services, dental, and mental health services. So I'd be happy to provide you with a more comprehensive report of the numbers of people that they've seen, but they are seeing an increase year over year in terms of volume. They said that the number of patients growing, is growing at 16% year over year, and then the number of service encounters they're seeing is growing at 13% year over year, which is why they've asked for an increase. They are also, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, are anticipating an increase in demand and the decrease in revenue. So economy declines or reduced donations, that's kind of what they're anticipating. Beyond that, I mean, I'd be happy to answer specific questions, but that's kind of an overview of the services that they provide.
Chair, or excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Laciando.
Katie, is, just sort of looking at the end of this contract or MOU, it's pretty skinny. Are there any other deliverables that they're supposed to be executing on?
Commissioner Laciando, when you, are you looking at the contract that Siobhan provided this weekend?
Yes.
Okay. We do have the original contract that I'd be happy to send over to you that details, you know, what they're providing, what they need to provide to us, all of that. It's, I mean, it's a long document.
Okay. I just, I ask because I, just kind of knowing the different context of all of these, because I see the housing first one, the New Path one is also skinny, but I know that that contract has a lot more in it in terms of the deliverables they're supposed to be. in terms of the deliverables they're supposed to be reporting out on. So it'd be helpful to see what we originally asked of them.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Loziano, you got the renewals, and we should have given you the originals. But in, there are not the same degree of deliverables in Genesis's contract as there is in New Path, but there are some deliverables reporting on what services they're providing for the compensation that we're giving. And I mean, I know you know the New Path contract well. That one definitely has some deliverables, but in it too, in terms of the, you know, that initial resolution language talks about how it is this exchange, right? These are people, and it's interesting too, the New Path one's a little unique. It's funded at the moment by indigent services, but indigent is only one of the aspects that we anticipate relief to the county. Some of the others are jail services, you know, law enforcement related things, as well as like EMS services that are hopefully to decline by treating that population.
So I spent a lot of time. Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Some of the deliverables that Genesis has provided are number of patient encounters, and then they go into detail in terms of the diagnosis for each one of those patients, number of procedure types when it comes to dental, and then mental health. So they do have all of those numbers, and I'd be happy to send those to the three of you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
So I've, you and I haven't had a chance to have this conversation, but issues around mental health and criminal justice and detox, et cetera, is all kind of my, my sweet spot, if you will. Not because I'm drinking too much lately, although.
Because your mental health is in question?
But, so I've, I've spent a lot of time thinking about these things, and I, I think we're kind of in an interesting sort of in-between year in that Medicaid started January first. The interesting thing in all of this, of all of the services, the people going to Genesis should be eligible for Medicaid right now unless they are people who are not eligible, are eligible for the exchange, but are choosing, because there's no longer an individual mandate, they're now choosing not to get health insurance. So that could be that, that group, but those people are all eligible at this point. In contrast, both Allenbaugh House and New Path, we're kind of in an in-between year where we need to work with the Department of Health and Welfare to make those services eligible as bundled payments for, for Medicaid. But, and those conversations have started, but unsurprisingly, Health and Welfare's a little busy right now. So I'll just share, at least at Allenbaugh House, and I know we've been paying that out of our Commissioner's office, not indigent, but sort of the same thing applies. That board met yesterday, which I'm on, and it's, it's kind of this coalition of the willing, and everybody's struggling right now. Al's is struggling, Luke's is struggling, they both pay in, you know, you've got the cities in there going. You know, can Medicaid pick this up yet? Kind of what we, we talked about, and this is where I'm hoping to push the New Path partners as well, you know, can we get through this year so we can push toward a glide path for Medicaid? Just knowing that that's going to take a little bit of time to get those waivers. So that's, that's just for some context. That's where my head is at and what I've been trying to work on, but unsurprisingly, Health and Welfare's busy, and Medicaid is a tangled web to work through.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, maybe just to add to what you were saying, it sounds like, Diana, you, you've identified similar, this transition. I kind of do see that this is an in-between year. It kind of depends on what type of service and where you're falling. But it does seem like we're in, headed in the direction of these services transitioning away from us. And so our, you know, Genesis would be a great example too. We can discuss it. But even if we did partial funding or something else, but letting, giving them notice that our funding will be going away. And I think to your point about the overall Medicaid discussion, presumably, and I say this a bit tongue-in-cheek, the legislature will eventually do something that will resolve some, and it's possible our funding just goes away, right? Like, because we have to contribute to Medicaid or whatever else. So this is, I do think this is a, this is a limbo year for indigent too, so it fits kind of where we are. But we are headed on the direction of, and it's probably good for these programs to start knowing that funding may start going away. And I think we can either look at, maybe that's, we fully fund them this year with the notice that it won't be, or some partial. It does depend on the type of program too, right, and what services are being provided.
So Phil, let me ask you this. How is this further complicated by the fact that we are in differing budget cycles with the state? Is that any further complication?
It is, but we can navigate it. That's where I think it's that budget cycle thing. Commissioner Loziano mentioned how it all started on January first.
Right.
I think we should be looking at the Medicaid cycle more than anything that January first timeframe and saying, okay, how does that inform our decisions? It, I can say the funding of indigent has been odd over the past few years, is going to continue to be odd until the legislature makes some final decisions. Because we don't know, there was a lot of discussion. I really thought for sure we would have something by the end of the session. So it, we find ourselves in a really awkward position, whereas like, we had everything teed up. And it didn't even, I mean, I have opinions on which was the right way to go, but it didn't matter what they did. We were ready to go. And now we are extending it and kind of going through the awkwardness of.
For the, for the un, for the uncession that took, took place this year.
Exactly.
Yes. All right.
Diana's ready.
I would, I would note, on the pet team, I think that would be worth having Director Boyinger come and talk to us about that one and, and just, you know, just overview of the program, but also kind of how the indigent piece fits into that and whether that still makes sense or not. And as you noted, it all, it sort of depends on what our requirements for contribution are going to be toward Medicaid too. So we'll see.
All right. Questions or insights?
No, just kind of give us a quick, high-level overview of where we stand with the indigent fund. We're about six million in there?
Yeah, high-level overview, the fund balance is just under six million dollars. We're looking at, I think, we will be presenting to consider how much of that do we use just funding the operation for the coming year, knowing that services are going to drop. Specifically, we anticipate a larger drop now that the IMD, that IMD waiver approval is, I mean, it was huge. It's huge conceptually, I think Diana would say that, but also just for the budget. Because we expect, as much as we expect a decline due to Medicaid expansion, we expect a greater decline in mental health. Because more, my, the presumption that we've been discussing, and I've talked to Seth and others, is to be involuntarily mentally held, generally other parts of your life have kind of come unglued before you got to that point. So odds are you are qualifying by the time you do get held. Not everyone would be, but most people will be. And so that one, and that's also the one where we've been seeing the most increases, right? We've been steadily increasing that and decreasing medical. Medical, we, we do expect to retain some, the anomaly, and I've already mentioned this to you, but it's just looking at us making informed guesses now that there's a recession, so we've gone back and looked at what happened during the last recession. Because that will be an uptick. I think the bigger issue that we're going to face is not what does indigent services have to deal with, but the metrics, so one of the ideas was the legislature will get one full year of Medicaid expanded and see what does utilization look like? Well, we just kicked off triggering utilization to go well past any of our projections, like the economy downturn. And then unfortunately, what that means is rather than some of those, we'll call them median projections that were discussed, our contribution will likely be based on the highest possible reference point. And so that's going to make it a little bit tougher when we get to that decision next year.
All right.
On COVID.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, or excuse me, Mr. Chair, and Katie, Katie, could you remind me, so Medicaid, it's up to a hundred and twenty percent of poverty, and then, but indigent is up to a hundred and what? There's this delta, right, between Medicaid and indigent. Will you remind me what that is?
So I, I believe Medicaid is, excuse me, Commissioner Loziano, I believe that Medicaid is at one thirty-eight. Siobhan can correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, you're correct.
And we don't necessarily, the hard part with indigent is that it's, the biggest factor is the size of the bill, right? As well as income and then expenses. So it's not simply SBL, you have to take into account the size of the bill and the monthly payoff.
So that's, you know, for fellow commissioners, that's where, I think the really frustrating thing is that with the, with the removal of the requirement for the individual mandate, we're now potentially in a situation where people who are eligible for purchasing health insurance on the exchange will choose not to have a giant, who knows what, accident, surgery, emergency surgery, what have you, and then based on their income, still have to come to the indigent fund. So that's where I really see that, that delta occurring. Am I tracking that correctly?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Loziano, you are absolutely tracking correctly. And I would actually anticipate because of the downturn, we, that may be more in terms of as a board, what you start to see now that Medicaid's picking up the others. But as people are struggling with expenses related to the economy, one expense, it's unwise and not advisable that people may opt out of is their health insurance bill, right? Especially if they're like in their thirties and they think, they perceive themselves to be healthy. All it takes is, you know, one car accident, and they're here, and it's not income-based. It's they weren't insured and the bills came in bigger than they expected, exactly what Katie was referencing.
So it used to be that hospitals would take payments to pay off your medical bill. When do they not, I mean, does that?
Katie's the pro there. That's what she used to do.
So I, I don't know if this still occurs, but like St. Luke's, St. Al's, they used to take payments for the medical bill until it was paid off. They no longer do that and they kick them all here? I mean, what does that look like now?
Yes, Commissioner Kenyon, so what we often see with the size of these bills is that they don't, they won't take payments, you know, for the rest of your life. It has to be something reasonable. So I believe the last, the longest I've seen with St. Luke's, and Siobhan could speak to St. Al's, is five years. But even then, with these bills, it's not feasible for people to make payments for that long. And then in addition to that, a lot of the hospital, or at least St. Luke's, I should just speak for them, will not write bills off to charity unless you go through this program first, because it's a source of funding for them. So they won't simply say, oh, you don't want to go through the county program. We'll go ahead and write it off because you qualify. A lot of those bills would go to collections if patients chose not to participate in the county program.
So we're seeing about five years is all they're willing to do?
Yes, and I, I'm not sure if that's still the case. And again, if you, if you're looking at a fifty thousand dollar bill, five years isn't something that a lot of these folks can handle.
All right. Anything else? Okay, well, we will be in recess.
Right upstairs for Legal.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.